On April 3rd, 2014, in Milford, Pennsylvania. My name is Kevin Boden. I'm Environmental Project Manager with the Office of Energy Products, which is the Division of FERC. Also with me here tonight on my left is Doug Wingahan. To his left is Amy Gutschel of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Also outside of the meetings tonight was Charles Brown and Lillian Hassan of the Kennedy Award and Kim Stieckerson. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the Federal Highway Administration, the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets, and the state's cooperating agencies for the preparation of this draft environmental fact statement. I'd like to thank those cooperating agencies for their continued assistance through the review of these projects. I'll briefly turn things over to Amy Gutschel of the Corps of Engineers, who will give a brief overview of their process of handling these projects.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening. My name is Amy Gutschel. I'm the Chief of the Upstate Bureau Section of the Regulatory Branch for the New York District, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I will be participating in tonight's meeting on behalf of the Corps of Engineers. The Corps of Engineers is here today to obtain information and to ensure coverage of both the public's and the Corps' concerns to assist in the regulatory review of a permit application submitted by Constitution Pipeline Company for the construction of the pipeline that would be described by Mr. Boden. If constructed, the pipeline would require crossings of waters that are considered waters of the United States and regulated under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act in both Pennsylvania and New York. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, as the lead federal agency, will make a decision whether to issue a certificate of public convenience and necessity to allow the construction of this project. The Corps of Engineers is neither a proponent or more an opponent of the proposed work. Our role is to determine whether the proposed activity, in this case, the construction of a 124-mile pipeline that would require numerous crossings of waters of the United States, is in the overall public interest. This hearing will play an important part in that determination. Please understand that we do not expect answer questions from the audience in this hearing related to the proposal, as we are here to obtain information and your comments. Questions on the regulatory process in general can be directed to my staff at my office on another day. The New York District has issued a public notice for this project with a comment period closing on April 7th. The entire public notice, including all of the attachments, is currently posted on the New York District website. The website address is www.nan.usacearmpy.com. We do have some copies of the public notice without the attachments on the registration table outside. If you are not currently on our public notice email distribution list and would like to receive an email announcement for these or public notices from my office, please provide your email address to one of the staff members at the registration tables today. I will report to you during your comments this evening.
Thank you. You'll note that we have a court reporter arranged to transcribe this meeting, so we have an accurate record of tonight's proceedings. If you'd like to have a copy of that transcript, you can make arrangements to do so with the court reporter following the meeting. So in June 2013, Constitution Pipeline Company and Airco Gas Transmission filed applications through Section 7 of the Natural Gas Act. These projects would consist of the installation of a 30-inch diameter natural gas pipeline between Susquehanna County, Pennsylvania, and Schuahery, New York. The primary purpose of this meeting is to give you an opportunity to get a store comments on the scope of these projects, the draft environmental fact statement that was prepared for them. It will help us the most if your comments are as specific as possible regarding the projects in the draft EIS. I'd like to again clarify that this is a project being promoted by Constitution and Airco. It's not being promoted by FERC. Rather, FERC is the lead federal agency responsible for evaluating applications to construct and operate natural gas pipeline facilities. Therefore, FERC is not an advocate for these projects. Instead, as mentioned throughout this project, FERC is an advocate for the environmental review process. So during our review of these projects, we disseminated information from the public, local, state, and federal agencies, Constitution and Airco, and our own independent analysis and field work. We analyzed all this information, prepared draft EIS, that was distributed to the public for comment. Notice of availability of this draft EIS was issued in the project on February 12th, 2014. So we are nearing the end of the 45-day comment period for the draft EIS. This comment period will end on the day of April 7th, 2014. All comments written, all comments received either written or spoken will be addressed in the final EIS. I encourage you, if you plan to submit comments and have not, please do so here today, either verbally during the formal comment period of tonight's meeting or in written form using one of the forms outside by the door. In addition, you can also submit comments electronically online using the directions in the notice of availability of the draft EIS. Again, your comments will be considered with equal weight regardless of the form they are given to us. So if you receive a copy of the draft EIS in your paper or CD form, you will receive a copy of the final. And if you did not receive a copy of either of those, you can either see your paper, please state your name of us outside so we can reach a comment for a copy of the final. So I'd like to iterate that neither the draft nor the final EIS are decision-making documents. In other words, one may issue the project and the other will determine whether the project will be approved or not. I want to differentiate between two different groups of FERC staff. That would be the FERC environmental staff and the FERC commissioners. All of FERC staff here tonight are part of the environmental review staff. We're responsible for overseeing the preparation of EIS. So we don't determine whether the project will be approved or not. Instead, the FERC commissioners do that. And they consist of five presidentially appointed individuals who are responsible for making the determination. So in their decision-making process, they consider a lot of information. And that includes equipment information, environmental information included in the draft EIS, final EIS, and other non-environmental information. That includes information from public comments, as well as things such as engineering, markets, and rates, which all play into their final decision on whether or not to approve the applicant's requests. So there are no review of FERC decisions by the President or Congress, thus maintaining FERC's role as an independent regulatory agency. If the commission goes to approve the project, a certificate of public convenience and necessity were to be issued, with Constitution and Airco would be required to meet certain conditions outlined in the document certificate. Additionally, FERC environmental staff will monitor projects through construction and restoration, performing daily onsite inspections to document environmental compliance in accordance with Constitution and Airco's proposed plans, mitigation, and any additional conditions in the FERC certificate. So this interview has been held on purpose to ensure your time for this whole thing. So we'll move into the formal part of the comment meeting where we'll hear all of your comments on the projects in the draft EIS. If you don't get a chance to speak tonight or you'd rather not speak, again, we still have the paper comment forms outside. So as I said before, this meeting is being recorded by court transcription service. So when you come up to the podium here on my right, please state your name, again, even if we already say it before we call you up, and spell your name so that it gets back to your link reported in the transcript of tonight's meeting. My number one rule for tonight is please treat everyone here with your absolute utterance of respect. I'm going to ask that while you're up here speaking, please don't say anything while they're speaking. Don't interrupt them so that their comments don't get accurately written to the record. Do anything while you're calling or anything. If you have anything, please just maybe clap after you're done. That's it. No doing. All right. So we have probably about 40 or 50 speakers signed up tonight. So I'm going to ask you guys to limit your comments to about four minutes so that we can get through everyone. We're going to call our speakers tonight. If in the order of you haven't stood in a FERC comment meeting, thanks, and then we'll get to the people who have commented earlier at a FERC meeting. So we'll give you a 20-second warning right before your four minutes is up when I ask you to continue ahead. So Doug will go through and be calling our speakers tonight.
Mike Stone. And it will be Kevin Hensley on deck.
My name is Michael Snow. I'm M-I-C-H-A-E-L-S-N-O-W, local union steward from Binghamton, New York.
Please take your microphone, sir.
Did you catch that?
Yes.
From biologists to state engineering to extensive environmental studies, we have proven over and over again that this industry's standards of work habit, safety, and environmental protection, but most of all, the concern for human longevity. As far as the ignorance of the opposition's role, you have helped this industry become the safest, most professional, most environmentally safe construction field of ethics in the Open your wallets and be ready for the next round of tax increases. The opposition has cost these communities millions and lost wages and jobs. We have been living in a state of oppression, depression, and suppression. We will continue to live in a state of unproductive, unemployed, desperate living conditions. We can no longer afford to wait for unjustified delays. You will not stop this industry's future production. It will proceed. You are only costing yourselves, your communities, your local services, from a better standard of living. Our local unionized work, workforce, is the most certified, qualified, trained industry in the United States. The last major pipeline to run across the Pennsylvania border into New York ran nearly 700,000 man-hours with only one small recordable incident. Proving unionized companies work, no other workforce has the safest history of works earned. It is time to end this unnecessary scrutiny and move forward. I'm begging FERC and the state commission service and our state representatives to release the permits necessary to put us back to work. Thank you.
Wendy Lynn Lee.
Who's next?
Kevin looks like Hensley.
That's close enough.
Yeah.
Spell it out. Yeah, it's Kevin Healy, H-E-A-T-L-Y. And I am going to address the audience, a good-looking bunch of people here tonight. I am a professional restoration ecologist. I make my living running around the United States repairing damaged ecosystems. So I have specialized expertise in both ecology and invasive species. Okay, now, I did a professional review of the FERC EIS. I also reviewed the resource documents that were submitted by Constitution Pipeline LLC. And they're grossly inadequate with respect to the ecology and ecological impacts. I'm going to give you a couple of examples. I have prepared documents that are going to be forwarded to FERC, but I wanted to give the audience in particular an understanding, because this isn't some warm and fuzzy tree-hugging nonsense. I'm not an environmentalist. I'm talking about a resource that is an economic driver that's sustainable for generations. Okay? This drives jobs in communities for generations. I'm not about the birds and the bees and some warm and fuzzy nonsense. But what the FERC document does is it ignores major ecological impacts. I'm going to give you a quick exam and explanation of some of these things. Number one, they talk about interior forests. Interior forests, by definition, is forest that's at least 300 feet away from non-forest. It's not near the edge. Anybody that's a hunter knows this. They know the edge habitat is different from the interior forest. Okay, FERC recognizes this in the document. They talk about the definition of interior forests as being 300-foot. Why is that? Because there's edge impacts. There's moisture changes and there's light changes on the forest floor, which changes everything. So if you're a landowner and your forest is bugging up by a right-of-way, you're going to bear the cost of that change in your forest composition. That's cost. That's cost to the landowner that's adjacent to these things, 300-foot either side. Okay? FERC recognizes edge impacts because they recognize interior forests. But when they're talking about the impact to the forest, what do they do? They only talk about the clearing zone. Now, you can't have it both ways. Either you recognize a 300-foot edge or you don't. And they do, because they recognize interior forests. You can't have this kind of logical inconsistency in a document and not have people get annoyed. Because if I'm a landowner and that pipeline goes through my forest or the edge of my forest, I got 300-foot in. What's the difference, you say? All trees are the same? No. Invasive species. Edge habitat is a biological driver to invasion. And what's invasion? You know, we could talk about anything from Japanese silt grass to multi-floral roads. What does FERC do? They say, okay, you know, Constitution in your documents? They say, we're going to monitor invasive for three years, but only on the pipeline right-of-way, not into the adjacent 300-foot. So not only do they underestimate the impact zone, they give the acreage as just the clearing and not the additional 300-foot. It sort of is magnitude larger than what they're telling you. But they only say three years worth of monitoring and treatment for invasions only on the right-of-way. Okay? As long as there's edge, until those trees grow back, there will be biological invasion. Constitution or whoever owns this right-of-way should be mandated to take care of those invasion, biological invasions, for the life of the right-of-way. That's only fair. Why should I, as a landowner, have to pay to treat silt grass in my forest? Because these guys went and put a right-of-way through there and didn't take into account what they even recognized as edge impacts. And there's other problems in here. I mean, they're talking about hydrostatic water. Okay, you're going to take-
20 seconds, please.
Two seconds or two minutes?
Twenty seconds.
20 seconds? Okay, I'm done now. If anybody asks a question, feel free to come up and ask me after this. Thank you very much.
Wendy Lynn Lee. I am a professor at Williamsburg University of Pennsylvania. I teach Philosophy of Ecology. I want to reiterate just a little bit of what Kevin Healy said. Make sure that you understand what some of these ecological impacts really are. And what I want to say particularly, as a union member tonight, to union members in the room, because my message to you is that your jobs, your jobs are being purchased as a theft from both the ecology and from the communities of the future, because your jobs are going to depend on what is real environmental destruction at an industry that is lying to you. Here are just a few points about the ecological devastation, particularly with respect to forest destruction. FERC grossly underestimates the area of forest impacted as it restricts impact to the area where trees are actually removed. In actuality, the edge effects, the zone where the forest changes due to additional light penetration and moisture loss extends at least 300 feet into the forest and into the area of, from the area of disturbance. This is standard in conservation biology. All right? This isn't guessing. This isn't fuzzling. This is the science. Instead of the 983 acres of upland forest that FERC claims will be impacted, the area of forest impacted is orders of magnitude larger. FERC must take edge impacts into account with determining acres of the forest that are impacted. FERC recognizes edge impacts, as they use the definition of interior forest as, quote, "forested areas greater than 300 feet from the influence of forest edges or open habitat." Here is the kicker of this. If they recognize interior forests, they must recognize edge effects and thus count them in the tabulation of the forest land that is impacted. And they don't. They cannot have this both ways. They are, in fact, lying to you. FERC must provide a total acreage of interior forest that will be lost if this pipeline is built. Right now, they either just provide acres clear, or they try a smoke-and-mirrors approach by describing the number of interior forest blocks before and after the pipeline rips them apart. The number of blocks, this is simply useless, pointless, empty information. If they're not going to tell us what the total acreage of interior forest is, right, we won't even know what will be lost. Right? And that's just one more way in which this industry, in fact, deceives you. The pipeline right-of-way will create edge habitats that will encourage the invasive species, just as he would mention. Um, let's see. Edge habitat due to moisture and light, along with the animals and predators like this habitat, and they do found invasive seeds. It's the perfect habitat for invasive species. The Constitution needs to monitor and treat invasive species along the road, along the right-of-way, for the entire lifespan, not just for a few years after construction. And what we know is that they won't do this. FERC is recommending the Constitution Development Upland Forest Mitigation Plan.
20 seconds, please.
All right. So I'm going to pause there. But what I want to say is that what we know since 19, since what, 19, since 2006, 2007, is that this is an industry, the natural gas industry, the midstream industry, that consistently deceives us, consistently destroys our land, consistently violates our property rights. And this pipeline should not be built.
Bambi Hanson.
Yeah, my name is Dave Leidhaker. I'm from Danville, Pennsylvania. I'm glad to see you, union, I'm glad to see the union guys here. Two of my best friends are union pipe fitters. I know they're dedicated to their job, but there's other issues they don't understand and they even admit that they don't understand the dangers of what's coming down the road. While FERC is preoccupied by eating their rubber stance of approval, I'd like to address my concerns about the unconstitutional pipeline directly to the citizens in attendance. I hope you are not here tonight with great expectations that they are concerned about your interests. They are really concerned about making money for the oil and gas companies and have no concern how this pipeline affects the taxpayers of Pennsylvania. This is nothing new. Whether it's Monsanto, General Motors, or the Wall Street banking system, the court races have infiltrated the original intent of our government and left us with very little recourse to defend ourselves. There are issues very seldom brought up to light in these type of meetings, and that's civil rights and community rights. The regulatory system by its definition regulates harm. It assumes harm will take place, and all we are left doing is trying to get harmed a little less. The government officials for the past decades have dramatically increased the removal of any local control by the citizens relating to issues of water, air, related health effects, and diminished property values caused by energy generation. The only control your local township has today is to site unwanted industries in a designated area created by zoning laws. Unfortunately, if you live in the zoned area, you're screwed. In Pennsylvania, as most of us know, there was a failed attempt by your elected officials or your elected corporate officials to remove environmental zoning regulations just for the gas companies. How do they get the privilege above the citizens of Pennsylvania? Fortunately for Pennsylvania, a portion of this bill, which is Act 13, was found unconstitutional, just like the Constitution Pipeline should be unconstitutional. Tonight, we are negotiating away our absolute right to clean air, potable water, and the right to take back our right of self-governing. Tonight, our constitutional rights and privileges under the Constitution is unlawfully being negotiated by our lawmakers and regulators. They are here to speak on behalf of corporate America, not to citizens they should be representing. The experts are willing to trade off industry concessions by implying they are managing or reducing the harm corporations inflict on our communities. Left out of the discussions and deal-cutting are the people and communities who will be, will have to endure the legalized poisoning, while the state government preempts them from protecting themselves. All this is done to guarantee the privileges bestowed on the corporations by the government that superficially represents the residents of Pennsylvania. The citizens of Pennsylvania need to take action and criminalize our politicians and corporate America for environmental and human health degradation caused by extreme gas production. Corporate America and its political lapdogs legalize it by issuing permits. The question of law presented by this confrontation between the people, their municipalities, and the state government is this: Are state regulatory laws superior to fundamental rights of the people? Why can the state adopt laws to deny and violate those rights of citizens? It's important that we not-
40 seconds, sir.
It's important that we not accept the default premises advanced by extractive industries, that the privileges of the state-chartered corporations are superior to the inalienable rights of people, and that the state has authority to license corporations to violate those rights. We need to defend our communities and the natural environment by not doming these assumptions to go unchallenged, lest not accept the premise that we, the people, have no authority to outlaw industrial practices that inflict poisons, diseases, environmental harms. They are treating our communities like resource colonies and sacrifice zones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you imagine if it's not that many of them here? They could give a little leeway.
I know, but they're not-
Or Jetties?
It's Bambi. B as a boy, A-M as a Mary, B as a boy, I, Hanson, H-A-N-S-O-N.
Call Mike now. Call Mike now.
Did you get this spelled?
Yeah.
Okay. This is the local newspaper of Schuahery County, New York, dated February 19th, 2014. The first of the four public FERC meetings was held there on Monday night. I was born and raised in Schuahery County. Sorry. Did you get that?
He'll give you an extra minute.
Okay. The newspaper I held up is from Schuahery County, New York. It was dated February 19th. The first of the four public meetings this week was held there on Monday night. I was born and raised in Schuahery County, and I'm now a proud resident of Pennsylvania. The front-page article says, "FERC has ruled that Constitution Pipeline's proposed project through parts of Schuahery County would have a, quote, 'less-than-significant environmental impact if,'" a key word "if," "promised mitigation steps are followed." We want to know what "less-than-significant" means. What are the promised mitigation steps? Who will enforce that these steps are followed? FERC found this pipeline project would have some adverse environmental impacts, but these impacts would be reduced to, again, less-than-significant levels. Again, we demand to know what "less-than-significant" means. "The process of extracting natural gas by fracking is dirty and dangerous. Transporting it through pipelines with the use of giant compressors is just as life-threatening and dirty. You can already see the negative environmental impacts in many Pennsylvania counties. I've been a nurse for more than 30 years. As a healthcare provider, I am proud to belong to Nurses Against Fracking. I would be able to tell my grandchildren and their children that I stood up and spoke in defense of their beautiful land, clean water, and fresh air. I spoke up to protect their quality of life, which they are not able to speak about at this time. No amount of money can buy any of the resources that I am here to protect. These pipelines are being built to transport natural gas to coastal US facilities where it will be converted into liquid natural gas, put in giant tankers, and transported across our oceans to China, India, and Japan. The natural gas industry has promised these and other countries that they can supply natural gas for 10 to 20 years. Geological surveys prove natural gas supplies will be exhausted before 20 years. The fracking and pipeline network is not about our national energy security, it's about the natural gas industry profits. We will be left with the mess to clean up." You only need to remember history. When natural resources are at stake, there are no rules except maybe one: profits before people. FERC's DEIS is shallow, vague, disingenuous, and misleading. No project should be considered with this so-called environmental impact statement. Thank you.
Does that say Brett or Bar? I think it said Martin. I'm looking, it's about where I signed. It's Brett Jennings, B-R-E-T-J-E-N-N, Councillor Great Bend Borough, Penn Charter Definition of Councillor, and Chairman Alston Great Bend Joint Sewer Authority. For the Unions, it's nice seeing you out here. Some of the best people that work on environmental remediation programs, the workers, the best ones are the Unions. Fortunately, I asked the plumbers and pipe fitters local eighty-three what happened when they were gonna get hired. They got hired to train the people that they were gonna hire at a lesser wage. Scranton, one of the Union bosses down there testified in Harrisburg. They're not gonna get it. But let me get back on to this boilerplate environmental statement. I work as an environmental consultant. I'm reading through the nine hundred some odd pages. Some of it is fluff, some of it, you can go to other documents and find the same wording. Just different places here and there, you can go in and change it. Of course, I didn't find where they forgot to change. One thing not addressed, most of this pipeline's in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, and there's severe reductions that have to be met by two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-five. How much total nitrogen from this and induced development from this pipeline will be created? How many square miles? Is it ten acres of the pipeline, the road? Pipeyards, are they already building pipeyards, stockpiling their pipes? That should be part of it. This total nitrogen, total phosphorus, total suspended solids. If DEP or EPA comes in and does what they said in the two thousand nine, December twenty-ninth letter of regulating and cutting in half or to the limits of technology our sewer plants, Binghamton's gonna have to build a new sewer plant. I might have to build a new sewer plant. And I'm not talking, oh, this is only a couple acres right here, the road, the well pad from, the entire development going through that pipeline. Upper Susquehanna watershed, that could be twenty, thirty, forty, hundred square miles. Are you gonna be two hundred square miles within thirty years of development of this? You know, but that's Upper Susquehanna and Chamonk Watershed and Lower Susquehanna. Will they be required to purchase offsets from Penn Vest for their PA section, or if New York DEC sets up a similar program? I won't go in on the owners, uh, their abilities to be actors. Uh, I've already done that. Two FER spoke about it here at Blue Ridge High School. That doesn't need to be redressed. But the total nitrogen, also drainage, what's increased drainage for the watershed from the induced development? Will it change our flood maps again? I've had to approve the flood maps going back to FEMA.
Twenty seconds, sir.
FEMA's increasing the rates. All of it's intertwined. Development and the cleanup for the Chesapeake Bay and what's being forced upon us. If they don't do it, our sewer plants, our MS4 permits for stormwater facilities will be impacted by EPA, and they'll get a free pass.
Please put your comments, sir. Matt Manni?
Hi, Tammy Manni, T-A-M-M-Y, M-A-N-N-I-N-G. Um, I don't have Brett's credentials. Um, I graduated in this school, and I live just over the mountain in Franklin Forks. And I've seen the irresponsible gas drilling that we've seen in our area. We have the water buffalo to show the irresponsibility. Um, we don't wanna see more pipelines coming into our area. We don't wanna see the pipelines that are here in our area. We don't wanna see the gas drillers in our area anymore. We've had enough of the spills in the newspapers, um, the blowouts, the explosions at the compressor stations, which we have a compressor station a mile and a half from our home. I'm sure that if more pipelines come in, we're gonna have more gas drilling coming into the area. Those of you who are not surrounded by it probably don't realize that the frac trucks go twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, past your bedroom window, all night long. You cannot sleep. And we've just, we've had enough. And, uh, jobs, if you're gonna say that it's creating jobs, this is from this week's newspaper, uh, Times Tribune, and it talks about the, the job data being as clumsy as the gas. Uh, New York, despite a moratorium on gas extraction, had a greater job growth than in Pennsylvania, than the Marcellus. Uh, front page, Times Tribune, drilling is killing our water. We're living proof of that. And I just wanna show you this. This is, this is a map of our area. We're the little star here in the middle. The red are all casing failures near us in a, in a straight line. So, you know, just some of the, a few of the mistakes that they've made, and we just don't trust, trust you anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Woo-hoo!
Hi, my name's Matt Manning, N-C-M-A-N-N-I-N-G, and that was my wife Tammy that was just up here talking, and, um, we've been living this nightmare for the past three years along with some of the other folks in this room. We bought a house in two thousand ten, a year and a month later, our water, along with four, three other homes in our town turns black. And every, we're just, everybody that has problems down here is just brushing under the carpet. It don't matter, you know, jobs, whatever. People's water goes bad, you got so much methane coming in your house, you can't use your kitchen stove in the middle of winter to cook your dinners, you can't use your furnace to heat your home. You have to take one day of your, of your week, every week, to go and get yourself water that's clean enough to bathe in, for your children, your grandchildren to bathe in. You have to pay to heat that water. Not one local official, a town representative, or state official's come to my house and see what's wrong or what's going on. Nobody cares, you're brushed under the carpet. The, um, we have two different wells that were beside us, and one was being drilled, one was being fracked, and all of a sudden, four homes' water turned black. And you've got so much gas coming in your house that you have to take a shower when you're in the middle of winter, with your windows open and your, your fan going. And you can't, your, your outside window open because of risk of explosion. Every time the fire alarm would go off, my wife was scared to death that the home blew up. And nobody should have to live like that and just be brushed under the carpet. Now, the nearest well to us is four thousand feet. The one that suspected of damage in our water is seven thousand feet. And there's a direct link to the well that's seven thousand feet away to our water that proves that it caused our water problem. But the, and it's right in front, it's right on the DEP's own documents and everything, right in front of everybody's face, but nobody will admit it. Nobody will come out and say publicly that they caused the water problems because it's seven thousand feet away. Right now, the regulations are twenty-five hundred feet. We live in a valley, all the wells are around us on the hilltops. One's being fracked, one's being drilled. All of a sudden, four homes, all in the same day, the water turned black. I mean, it's, you're, you're better off bathing in a mud puddle than you are at water. Not, not only did our water fill with methane, but it also filled with high levels of metals, dangerously high levels of metals, that caused my dog to have a tumor. Uh, we had a cat that had numerous litters of kittens that were born dead afterwards. And every once in a while, the kid would leave the toilet lid open, and the dog would be drinking out. But now she's got a huge tumor on her side. She's been perfectly healthy until then. Um, we spotted, we were fortunate enough to have the black water and spot it before we drank any of it, and we quit drinking it, so luckily, we haven't developed anything yet that we know of, but, um, you know, there's just so much cover-up with all this stuff that's going on down here. Nobody wants to admit it goes on. And when this happens to a family, your home's devalued. We found one insurance company that would insure our home, only one. It, it's not fair to the people who have to live like this. Your, your home's now worth nothing, you can't sell it, you can't rent it. If, you know, these people are gonna come in here and take this gas out and pump it to all the, all the other countries, when the families are made to live like this and they have to put out extra money to keep their water from freezing outside, and have to take one day of their, every week to deliver water into the town, and there's other folks in this room that have to do the same thing. That's not fair. It ain't right. How, I say to anybody who doubts me, put yourself in my shoes today, and it ain't right. It just is not right.
Yeah, Ray Campbell, Dimey, Pennsylvania. I'm one of the affected landowners.
So, yes, please, sir.
K-E-M-B-L-E. I'm one of the affected landowners, also, I'm an ex-gas worker, and I'm also a teamster. I got over sixteen wells around my house with the gathering lines running all over the place. The runoff of these gathering lines coming off the hill sides have failed. The mud runs down into the property, into the creek beds. The hunting has gone terribly bad in my area. There's nothing worth hunting because of all the gathering lines and the well pads. I got, the one compressor station sitting down the road blew up a couple years ago, right over my house. That was the later compressor station. I got a two compressor station a half mile down the road the other end, which totally contaminates the whole valley with the air. When they blow that compressor station up, you barely breathe in the valley. This is just numerous of the problems. I've idled the truck for three years for the gas industry. Between the cross-contaminations that we do with the trucks, the illegal thumpies that we have done, the blowouts that we've done where they put gathering lines and they blow out, and we've gone in the middle of the night to do these cleanups, it's just ridiculous. It's one of the reasons I started, I quit, and I started speaking out, because I just couldn't do this in my own county where I live. My house is absolutely worth zero. I have a buffalo sit out there, just like Matt, Tammy. We have to truck the water in so we can turn around and take a shower. We should not have to live like this. I'm tired of it. I don't want any more wells around me. I don't want any more pipelines in the county. I would just prefer to see the whole dang thing out of Susquehanna County. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Roter, R-E-B-E-C-C-A-R-O-T-E-R, and I live less than a mile from the Williams Central compressor Station. Since the weather has warmed up, I can hear the low-frequency vibration rumble from the station twenty-four-seven. The sound is associated with fibroacoustic disease, which can, among other things, affect cardiac function. If I can hear it, that means the air is flowing my way, and so are all the toxic air emissions like benzene, formaldehyde, nitrogen oxides, PM two-point-five, and more hazardous air pollutants per the P-A-D, per the P-A-D, air pollution permits that bring along known human health risks ranging from headaches, nosebleeds, sore throats, to cancer, et cetera. I cannot help but wonder if these toxic air emissions flowing my way have anything to do with my recent sore throat, earache, and general upper respiratory symptoms. Williams still denies the central station is the beginning of the FERC project, the thirty-inch transmission line, the Constitution Pipeline, which lets them off the hook for any accountability to our community for any comprehensive environmental impact study, cumulative air and public health studies, real estate evaluation, increased truck traffic, road damage, induced build-out, and general safety living around all the infrastructure. We have no setbacks for any infrastructure, except compressors, which is a mere three hundred feet. This is a dangerous industry happening in our backyards, front yards, and schoolyards, and no one is accountable to us for transparency or our safety. The service is comparable to Wild Well out of Houston, Texas, or required twice that I know of in the past year in my township to deal with dangerous added-control wells. It takes twenty-four hours for the, uh, emergency crew to get here. No one voluntarily tells us anything, whether it's a more captain spill in added-control well of low-down compressor explosions and fires, all of which we've experienced. This is our new normal. There is no system to notify residents living around infrastructure when there are incidents. We are out of the loop when it comes to public safety and transparency. A month ago, a Sherwin-Robbe had exploded in Green County, Pennsylvania, and incinerated three hundred-foot radius. An industry worker, Ian McKee, was killed. We should not forget him. We are out of the loop when it comes to public safety. At this explosion, a half-mile radius was blocked off to public safety in Green County. Setbacks from homes, schools, other human dwellings are a real safety issue in our county. I'm also concerned about setbacks for well pads with compressors. The Tadic well pad, which is not that far from the Williams Central, if that well pad blows, and the central station also blow, and that's slated at the beginning of this thirty-inch transmission line, that would be a fireball. Many of my neighbors and myself would possibly be incinerated. Jeffy Wees, PMSA's head of safety, told the newspaper reporter, "The regulatory process he oversees is kind of dying." He said, "PMSA has very few tools to work with and enforce the safety rules." He noted that $2 million civil penalty would not hurt the mutual cooperation. PMSA is creating a YouTube channel to persuade the industry to voluntarily improve its safety operations, and is reaching out to us, the public, to socialize the issue. I asked FERC, "Need you hear more?" The head of PMSA Safety flat-out said he cannot protect us from this project, deny this application, as Williamson Cavett segmented the project to avoid accountability to our community, and because even PMSA acknowledges they can't protect us. You and FERC have an opportunity to take America back from rural communities like mine, or to give a corporate partnership eminent domain to steal American land, to export an American resource, natural gas, overseas to maximize corporate profit, leaving us with all the environmental health and associated economic costs. Do the right thing by America and deny this application.
Yes. Um, if you want me to spell it?
Go ahead.
You just go ahead, please. Hi, my name is Barbara Clifford. I am a member of the executive council of Green Easy Susquehanna County VES, and I am reading the following comments on behalf of VES.
Into the microphone.
Into the mic.
Can I start with, one second?
Yeah, go ahead. You might need a little buzzer. A little, thank you. Mic's a little picky, you might need a little buzzer, thanks.
Okay. Should I start, start from the beginning?
Yes, please.
My name is Barbara Clifford. I am a member of the executive council of Green Easy Susquehanna County VES, and I am reading the following comments on behalf of VES. Our mission and goal is to protect mutual air quality and help the communities of Susquehanna County, Pennsylvania, from potentially harmful air emissions released through processes of shale gas extraction, reduction, and transport. We therefore ask FERC to deny the certificate of convenience and the domain to Williams and Cavett with the Constitution Pipeline. As a Constitution Pipeline project that would absolutely induce development in our county and absolutely worsen our air quality, we ask FERC to deny the project outright. We want FERC to acknowledge limited use of segmentation, showing a lack of transparency and honesty about concern for our community. Williams continues to state the Williams Central Station is not a part of this FERC project, thereby evading any required environmental impact statement for our county. We further ask FERC to require Williamson Cavett to do a comprehensive air study from upstream to midstream to characterize the air pollution during drilling, fracking, layering of green completions, pipeline duty to emissions, and dehydrations in compressors. We ask that future emissions be part of the study and that the Carol Subvayor be employed. We ask for an independent team of researchers representing all stakeholders to conduct this comprehensive air study, and to also evaluate community and public health impacts. We ask- ask for an independent team of researchers representing all stakeholders to conduct this comprehensive air study, and to also evaluate the community's public health impacts. We ask that continuous emissions monitoring systems be employed in this study at all natural gas sites, and for the data to be totally transparent for public review. We recommend that Dr. Michael McCollough, Ph.D., Department of College and Department of Public Health, Dr. Robert Shetland, Duke University, Dr. Theo Colborne, Endocrinologist, Dr. Anna Solar, University of Pennsylvania Center for Excellence in Environmental Ecology, and Dr. David Brown from Southwest Environmental Health Project be consulted on and participate in designing and implementing this comprehensive air and public health study. Thank you.
Ryan Finan? Daniel Reynolds?
F R A N K, F Y N A N. I just want to make one point. As concerned citizen back of Sussex County, I'm distressed about changes in air quality due to natural gas extraction, and I object to this pipeline. Although pipelines appear to be benign, they will demand compressor stations to move the gas through the line. The compressors not only move the gas, they remove the infurities and release them into our breathing air. Benzene and formaldehyde are just two other poisons they admit. This activity is not acceptable and should not be permitted. Give the rest of my time to Matt Walker, if that's possible.
You have additional three minutes.
Pardon?
D A N I E L R E Y N O L D S. Guys, I know you guys are upset. I happen to be a pipeline...
Can you please speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry you guys are upset. I'm sorry something's happened to you. I happen to be a pipeline. I've been pipelining for about four to five years. Now, I grew up in this area. I graduated from Blue Ridge High School. I stole own property down here. I hunt. I fish. I'm a naturalist myself. But I will say this. I grew up on farms in this area. And I'll tell you what. If an accident happens on the pipeline, we take care of it. We have diaper kits, spill kits, so on and so forth. And I know, growing up on the farm, we didn't have any of that stuff. I know how many hydraulic lines have broken on the farm, how many water lines, radiators, EMI frees, and before this new environmental EMI freeze, guess what? We're using the old green stuff that will kill your cats, kill your dogs, and kill cows. I'm sorry if you guys have issues. I can't, I can't, I can't help that. But what I can say is all the farms that I've worked on in this area have polluted way more than any pipeline that I have ever been a part of putting in the ground. I know that doing pipelines, you may, you may not understand it. My house that I live at up in Escondia, New York, was built in fifty-four, has natural gas heat. Guess what? That pipeline that gives me my heat, my hot water, was there long before I got there. These pipelines have been coming through the area since the thirties, and a lot of these older pipelines need to be replaced. And I can understand, like I said, everybody has heartache, but those old lines that were put in in the thirties and the forties, if they're not replaced, the dangers you think you have now are nothing compared to what a new pipeline will do. The coating alone on new pipelines lasts longer than the lines that are in the ground now. I know that I've been a pro, I've been part of projects where we replace old lines. And I've been in part of projects in Pennsylvania, West Virginia, New York now. And I will say this. Your evasion of species, I don't know much about that. I'm sorry, I don't. But of stuff that I've read in West Virginia, a lot of the deer population are coming back to pipelines. A lot of the hunters are happy because things are, things are starting to get back to pipelines. Those pipeline rightaways, I don't know the evasion of species. I really don't. But when you have habitat that's coming back where people can hunt, hunt again, fish again, all I know is that anything that I've ever seen on the pipelines has been done safely. Any spill that I've ever been a part of, whether I may have caused it, hydraulic line breaks, that happened. But I'll tell you, the farms I've ever grown up on, we never had spill kits. We never had diapers. You know what we did? We kicked the dirt over the hydraulic fluid and walked away. The diesel fuel spilling on the farms that I've worked on? Are you kidding me? If you've spent any time on a farm, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And I'll tell you what, that doesn't happen on a pipeline. Pipeline is the safest transmission of, of natural gas. It's safer than above ground. It's safer than the oil line in Alaska. Putting it in the ground, burying the line, is the safest way to transmit the gas. I'm not here to, to pound the drum for, for independence of oil, independence of natural gas. I'm trying to do the safest, cleanest job that I can do because I have property in Susquehanna County. I hunt and fish in Susquehanna County. I hunt and fish in New York. And I don't want my gear going away. I don't want my fish, my trout, my smallmouth bass.
Twenty seconds, please.
I don't want any of that stuff ruined. That's why when I work for pipeline, I do it the safest possible way I can do it every day. Thank you very much.
Merrill Solar?
John Heptig?
Merrill just went to the bathroom. She'll be back.
John Heptig?
My name is John Heptig. That's J O H N, and then H E P T I G. And I'm a candidate for state representative. I'm running as a Democrat in the primary unopposed in District 111, which we'll cover, starting in next, next election cycle, we'll cover most of Susquehanna and Wayne County. Now, I don't want to be a candidate who, or a politician who speaks out of both sides of his mouth, or is very vague on what he stands for. I'm just gonna cut straight to the point. I do support a ban on fracking. I believe that, you know, hydraulic fracturing should be our absolute last resort, not our first. And before I continue, I should just mention that I didn't realize I was gonna be speaking today, so I just quickly jotted down some notes here, so sorry if I don't sound so great here. So anyway, you know, I believe water is our most valuable resource, and I would hate to see something happen in Pennsylvania that happened down in West Virginia. Now, you know, I'm a big supporter of unions, and one reason is, is because they are very responsible. They follow all the regulations, all the guidelines. My dad, he, he works for IBW. However, I have worked as an engineer for the last seven or eight years, and, you know, the one thing I got out of that is I realized that human beings are incapable of making perfect designs. And, you know, all it takes is one incident, and you have something like you have, you know, like I said, West Virginia, Gulf of Mexico. Now, you know, there's two big reasons why, you know, people want this. One is for energy independence, and the other one is for, you know, money, jobs, et cetera. Now, you know, when it comes to energy, you know, obviously I believe in green energy, and I realize that, you know, there's a big argument against, you know, the wind doesn't always blow, the sun doesn't always shine, that sort of thing. However, there are an infinite number of things we can do to reduce how much fuel we use. You know, I grew up in Pittsburgh, and they were constantly building new homes out in the suburbs. All the old homes near the city are going abandoned, and then so people are driving an hour to work, wasting gas. Not only that, but you're tearing down the rainforests, et cetera. Then you think about all the jobs you see on, you know, turn on the TV, you look at all these commercials on TV, you think about all the people who have to drive to work every day to do those jobs. I mean, it's just wasteful energy. Those people could be, you know, working on other things that are, for, you know, sustainable living. Then when it comes to, you know, money, you know, we're the richest country in the world. There's no reason we need to pollute our water. You know, there's, you know, hate to use the word infinite again, but there's an infinite number of things we could do as far as money, you know, building high-speed rail, et cetera, et cetera. And that's all I got, but I just want to let you know I'll be, you know, here afterwards, probably near the door there. I got a handful of flyers in case people are interested in some, some of my other ideas, but thanks for your time.
Merrill Solar?
Tony Baroni?
Merrill Solar, my name's not really... M E R Y L S O L A R. I am a resident of New Milford Township. I live here. The Constitution is planned for about two thousand feet from my back door. It's just on my neighbor's property. Mine, I only have five relators. And I just lived through the construction of a Blue Stone gathering, which follows the same route as the construction, as the Constitution. So here we go again. Destroyed roads, crushed sluice pipes, so now I have a moat in front of my house. I mean, I can't begin to tell you all the nightmares. And I really wasn't planning on saying anything, because I've been going through this for two years now. When they first came up with the Constitution, and then it, you know, we, the landpeople were coming to do the surveys and badgering us. So the only thing I have left to say, and I guess it's because I have no more delusions, that FERC's role in this is to decide if the Constitution will move forward, but just when, and how many tweaks need to be done along the way to make more people smile, more landowners smile, longer manipulating them. You know, so I've spoken, I've had many conversations with people from FERC, and what I've come to understand is that they are under governmental congressional mandate, basically, to assume that the need for the natural gas is there, and the pipeline is a necessity. So that just really brings me to one last question. Or one last issue. FERC's test with issue against certificate of public convenience and public necessity. And I really have to think long and hard about what exactly that means. And I think it's FERC that needs to think long and hard about what exactly that means. Because every day you wake up and you hear more about gas being sold to China and India and everywhere else that it's needed by the industry so they can maximize their profits from this resource. Then you hear about the government, starting to think about how we can deflate the Russian threat on the Ukraine and supply our natural gas resources in place of theirs to the Ukraine in Western Europe. So now we're thinking of it as a political point. So I have to ask the question, is this really a certificate of public convenience and necessity? Or maybe it should be called a certificate of political expediency and collusion with industry for their convenience, their profit, at our expense? Thank you. I think you guys have so many good speakers though. I didn't use my four minutes. Can you please give it to someone else who needs it?
Tony Baroni?
I'm Tony Baroni. I'm Anthony Baroni for the record. A N D H O N Y, E A R O N I. I live in Milford on Sutton Road. Till now, I thought it was safe to say most of Susquehanna County was in favor of gas development. I've been in favor of it. I've sold a gas lease. I've leased a light, sold a right-of-way across my property. Blue Stone put their pipeline through my property. I was impressed with the care they took putting it through. But dealing with Constitution is pushing me toward the ranks of the anti-gas people. Constitution wants to run their property, their pipeline across my property, and I'm not agreeable. But they tell me that this is a federal project, so you can't stop us. We're just coming through whether you want it or not. They're using this tactic to bully us, and I really hate that. I despise it, and it turns me off.
Here, here.
They, I've received various letters and phone calls over the last year from, the first one I threw away because it told me, "You better agree with this. You just sign up, because if you start negotiating with us..." FERC's were half of a Blue Stone page. So they were bad to begin with. Well, since I tried contacting people, when I made contacts and make appointments, they'd make appointments to come and see me. Guy wouldn't show up, never call, never apologize. Three times this happened. I finally got, dealing with a man that's polite and easy to, he's agreeable to deal with, but I don't like what he says. So I, I'm disagreeable because they're rude, heavy-handed. I feel like I'm being bullied. My experience with Blue Stone did not go well. They dug a ditch, they mounted up my dirt. I was, I was barred from going on most of my property for over a year. They said it would take one or two. And they were good to deal with. One thing they did was they purchased right, options to purchase first. And if they ran into a landowner and didn't want to deal with them, they'd find another way around, dealing with cooperative landowners. So I have some questions or comments on the impact statement. I don't know if FERC actually verifies what is in the document is correct or accurate, or that they just take it at face value unless we point out various inaccuracies. Now, I've studied what I could in this huge document, and I don't know what polistry and emergent wetland and all this stuff is. I'd still be on Google trying to figure it out, but I'll talk about what I know. The inaccuracies, there are inaccuracies on my property. The maps I was given, only a month ago, showed the pipeline running on the north side of Sutton Road. My property is on the south side of Sutton Road. The overall map showed that not even going through my property. Well, apparently it was wrong. The line will go through my property according to the detail. But the detailed map showed it crossing the Blue Stone pipeline on my property. And the Blue Stone property, pipeline was shown in a position that was ninety degrees off the way the Blue Stone is. So they're not being very careful here. Appendix L itemizes wetland crossings. It shows a pipeline coming onto my property through a wetland that's forty-eight feet long, and another crossing off my property wetlands. Oh, boy, I'm never gonna make it. I got some of his time, don't I?
Did you give him my, the rest of my time?
Anyway, they get these inaccuracies. I don't know what the people want. Another, okay. Here's something not spelled out in the environmental impact statement. The proposed pipeline, this is from the very first station, sentence in it. Proposed pipeline project was developed in response to market demands in New York and New England, and due to interest from shippers that require transportation capacity from Susquehanna County, Pennsylvania to existing Tennessee, blah, 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 blah. This point is not expanded on in the five bullets on the next page, where they tell about all the wonderful things this is gonna do for us. But they should have a sixth bullet that says something like, "Bringing our gas to port cities will allow this gas to be shipped overseas to be sold. This will greatly increase the demand of the gas, thus raising the price and ultimately profits." Think about it. Is this good for us, the residents of Susquehanna County, the residents of the United States? I have serious doubts. I urge you, do not approve it. They use this fact that it's a federal project to bully us. Their work has been inaccurate. They prefer imminent demand than to adjust the line to avoid it, and the project will serve big energy companies, not Americans, if this gas is shipped overseas.
Alex Lotorto?
Who's the first one?
Oh, wait, is this your first one?
Who's first? Barry Corrigan, Jr. Alex Lotorto?
A L E X L O T O R T O. I'm a, I'm speaking partially on behalf of my organization. It's called Energy Justice Network. Our organization focuses on the intersection of social justice and the environment, and a large amount of the work that I've done in the, in the last year, year and a half that I've consulted with them, is talking to union members about what I call a just transition. And I'll And I'll speak to this very briefly, but the concept is that a good jobs and a healthy environment are not mutually exclusive. It's not a very radical concept. We've been doing it in the timber industry in Pennsylvania for many years. Since Gifford Pinchot was governor, he put in a forestry program, sustainable yield logging, set a tree plantations, we have select cuts, it creates more jobs, it keeps our timber, hardwood industry going. And that's an industry that also I'd like to point out, as I use that example often, it's gonna be directly impacted by the use of our forests for pipeline infrastructure, well pads, and it's a historical rural heritage industry. It's one of many that we have here in rural Pennsylvania. Workers across our state, our largest assets, and I'm sure many of the men in this room would say it, is their homes. And you raise wages for your families, and you pay into your mortgage, and your home becomes a proud home set for yourself and your family and generations yet to come. What we've heard from landowners here, and I can say that there's landowners from, all the way from Pike County where the Tennessee pipeline just finished last year, that would say that their property values were decreased by this eminent domain process, that they were not compensated fairly, and that essentially, because their homes are devalued, their wages were stolen. You know, I worked very closely with some union retirees that retired to the Poconos, and I'm sure there's plenty in the Endless Mountains, that have chosen this area to live and to enjoy, and the Catskills where some of you are from and upstate, you'd say the same thing. When we industrialize our rural landscape, we displace our traditional rural heritage industries that include agriculture, real estate, tourism, recreation, hardwoods, stone, construction, all the other things that we could have. And I'd like to add, that was mentioned by our candidate here, John Heptig, you know, the green energy technologies, a young engineer. You know, we've innovated our way out of problems throughout history in America. You know, electric car components have to be made, wind turbine blades have to be made, solar panels have to be made, homes have to be weatherized, buildings, commercial building projects have to be built to a new coast so that we can have those kinds of jobs in the future. That's where we need to be focused, when we spend billions and billions of dollars building up this temporary industry that's not gonna last generations yet to come. You displace that opportunity and you push it down the road, and we always talk about generations yet to come. And I'd like to say, you know, my union, I'm here for, also to speak just as a union guy, is industrial workers of the world. We invented the phrase, "An injury to one is an injury to all." And I implore the unions that are involved in negotiating these project labor agreements, please look at the costs to the workers and the path of this pipeline, the people who live next to these wells that have to be drilled to supply the line, the compressor stations that emit toxic emissions. Don't just say, "As long as I got mine." Say, "An injury to one is an injury to all," because that's the concept of labor. Now, the last point I want to make, is labor and environmentalists have a unique partnership we can make with each other. Our political enemies are the same. The people who want to pass right-to-work legislation are the same people who want to put pipelines in the ground. And when you lobby on behalf of these companies, you pump money directly into their pockets that they use to support our political enemies. And I have to tell you, right here in Pennsylvania, we've been fighting a right-to-work bill, and the politicians pushing it, including our governor, Tom Corbett, are receiving great, millions of dollars in donations from these companies. So we have a lot of other angle to think about. So please be careful with our, how we treat each other, because I would like to build better relationships with you.
My name is Barry Corrigan Jr., C O R R I G A N. I didn't prepare anything, I'm just here as an impacted people. I have an intimate relationship with people who have been drilled and are part of the collecting of the gas, they're getting paid to get the gas. Their payment percentage starts with a decimal point and three zeros. I don't know if you know what that means when you're trying to measure something, but it's, you can't see it. It's stupid. Their land has been robbed from them, and they have been lied to on a daily basis. Now they want to run a Constitution pipeline through their land. You people have nothing to worry about, because Constitution pipeline says that we can't go anywhere else but through their land, and they're gonna say no. If you say no, they can't do it. This eminent domain thing is garbage. They can only do that if they have no other alternative. Or as long as you don't give them any other alternative, they can't do it. You own the land, it belongs to you. They can't just come in and tell you, "Oh, by the way, this land is no longer worth anything, and we're gonna ruin the area all around for your neighbors." They can't just do that. Not without ludicrous compensation. I mean, if they want to walk in and say, "Okay, we'll give you 2% of everything that goes through the pipeline and make that go into the community," well now maybe we're talking about something that might be negotiable, and maybe there would be people that would be willing to allow you to do it. I mean, the gas is here, it's gotta get out, don't get me wrong. I don't misunderstand that. But what's happening to the people that live here while all of you go out and make your billions of dollars is like this, and it's wrong, and you're ruining them and you're lying to them.
Hi, my name is Matt Walker, M A T T W A L K E R, and I'm a community outreach shredder with Clean Air Council. Hold on one second here. Clean Air Council is an environmental health organization of members throughout Pennsylvania, including Susquehanna County. For more than 40 years, the Council has fought to protect everyone's right to reach clean air. Since the Constitution pipeline was first proposed, many residents have noticed a strange coincidence that Williams Midstream happened to be proposed at the start, and start constructing a natural gas compressor station in Brooklyn Township, PA, at the exact location where the Constitution pipeline would begin. The public also noticed a glaring admission in the application of FERC for this pipeline project, no compressor stations at the beginning of the pipeline. It's unusual for compressor stations to not be pros of this stage of the project. Because the expanded center of the compressor station will likely play a critical role in the functioning of the Constitution pipeline if it is built, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission of FERC should definitely consider the impacts of that expansion and the impacts of the operation of the compressor station in general as part of its cumulative impacts review of the project. FERC has argued that the station was developed for a different project and would be operating in any case. Clean Air Council argues that this unacceptable abandonment by FERC of its responsibilities to consider cumulative impacts. Frankly, it doesn't matter how many pipelines Williams can discharge gas from, from the central station or who owns the project. The point is that the air and water impacts associated with the station must be considered and quantified in the EIS. FERC must also include a more detailed discussion about the right compressor station, which would allow gas from the Constitution to enter into both airways and the Tennessee gas pipeline in New York. FERC must include in the final EIS an analysis of direct and indirect air quality greenhouse gas impacts that will result from the projects, including emissions generated by future wells and gathering compressor stations induced by the availability of a nearby transmission conduit. Constitution is required by law to allow other companies to use their pipeline, so that the existence of the pipeline will likely spur more facilities. The National Environmental Policy Act requires FERC to take into account the incremental impacts of the proposed pipeline when added to other past, present, or reasonably foreseeable projects, regardless of what agency or person builds them or allows them. FERC should not be looking for reasons to abandon that responsibility. FERC also erroneously stated in the draft EIS that the majority of air pollution impacts should be short-term and from construction activities. This clearly demonstrates that FERC did not consider the 24 hours, seven days a week harmful air emissions from at least two compressor stations and two metering stations that are necessary to make the Constitution pipeline function, not to mention other gathering stations that are already being constructed to discharge gas to Constitution. The Council urges FERC to reconsider these impacts by quantifying in the final EIS both projected emissions from the facilities and indirect emissions that result from the project such as increased drilling and additional stations. Compressor stations will cause the most air pollution to the life of the pipeline, and if FERC were to have emissions up through all the infrastructure, the commission would find that they would indeed add up to creating a significant impact on air quality and public health in the region. FERC stated that there is no standard methodology to evaluate the cumulative impacts of Constitution's greenhouse gases on climate change, but then later concluded that the emissions from this project are insignificant since they are not, since they are only a small percentage of total US greenhouse gas emissions. This is a woefully inadequate analysis of the issue. With this logic, the more pipelines FERC permits, the less significant their impacts become. The Council implores FERC to take this issue seriously and develop more scientific protocol for evaluating greenhouse gas emissions. In closing, the Council requests that FERC redo their cumulative impacts analysis to include the air quality impacts from compressor stations associated with this pipeline or those that could result from the building of the Constitution pipeline. Please do your due diligence and research into incorporating public testimony and comments before issuing the final EIS. Residents need a government ABC that will listen to and address their concerns. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Catherine, H O L L E R A N. I'm a resident of New Milford, this very area, we're about, we live about six miles away, and this Constitution pipeline is being routed directly through our entire 25 acre parcel, which is not a lot of acreage. I know it's going many, many miles, so our 25 acre parcel, we really don't want to have sliced and split. It's coming from the south, going up the west border of our property, cutting through to the east, making an arbitrary detour to purposely cut through the midland and go east into a neighboring property. Doing this, it goes through all our roads, where we have many, many mature maple trees that we use for maple syrup production. It's in full swing right now, and we boil the sap and make maple syrup, and these trees take 50, 60 years to get to the minimum 10-inch diameter in order to tap them, and this roof will wipe out most of that sugar bush behind our house. Not to mention, we live on a lake, a little private lake, and the other side of our property is border of it, and there's a major inlet stream to that lake that they're cutting right through. So that is a major environmental impact on the wetlands and the lake and possibly the quality of the lake water, not to mention our well, which is very close proximity. But the other problem, which I know everybody here has problems with going through their land in one way or another, but one of the issues I want to bring up that nobody else has brought up is that my, and one of the things that's cutting through besides several stone walls on our property that have been there for many, many years, decades, is that we have archaeological cylindrical stone piles that are near our stream and on the hillside on our property. These are old, are archaeological structures that they're still determining the value of. My daughter is a professional archaeological field technician, she graduated from Champaign University on an anthropology degree. She has worked on several pipelines, including this one, and she assesses and protects cultural resources in accordance with federal law, which they have to do in order to let the pipeline through. We know for a fact that the cultural significance of these stone piles has yet to be determined, and that is not considered acceptable yet to simply destroy them. The demolition of an obviously cultural structure without knowledge of what it is or what we can learn from it is criminal. Although cultural resource surveys have been done on the entire proposed roof, it's also true that there's been no determination on what research and excavation must be done before stone piles can be destroyed. As far as I know, so far our current policy has been to avoid the issue. Also, this roof has been surveyed for cultural resources, however, the predictive modeling that they are using to determine where the actual physical testing will take place has been done on large sections of land, sometimes miles at a time, to be tested solely by pedestrian survey. That means they just kind of walk around and look at it. Instead of the digging and sifting for pre-storied and historic artifacts, which is what my daughter does as an archaeologist, they do shell testing. A lot of times they don't require them to do shell testing, which they are supposed to, they just have a pedestrian do a survey by walking around. This is unusual for a project proposing such expensive and irreversible destruction, and even back to the question, what might have been missed that you're digging up and destroying and wiping out when you cleared a 100-foot wide corridor? Even more so than the environmental resources, the cultural resources cannot be replaced once they're destroyed, and the information we might have learned from our buried history can never be recovered. And I just want also to mention that, like many of you other landowners, we will be paying taxes forever on a huge swath of our property, of our 25 to 5 acres, probably a quarter to one percent of our property that we will pay taxes on, but you could already follow the Blue Stone pipeline as a common title available, thank you.
Howard, H O W A R D, H O W A R D, H O W A R D, N N U N. Howard, H O W A R D, H O W A R D, N N U N. I'm gonna start with a quote from my distinguished colleague from Udonilla, New York, who stated so eloquently in Richmondville on Wednesday night, "None one job should ever be accepted with this project as a result of and through the use of eminent domain proceedings." In regard to the shenanigans of the last two evenings in Hampton, New York last night and in Oneonta, New York the night before, the concerned citizens of Trout Creek demand a redo on the Oneonta hearing from Tuesday night, April 4, 2014. The three of you should be ashamed of yourselves. You are an insult to your organizations and your positions, and you are a disgrace to yourselves and your families. The concerned citizens of Trout Creek demand a redo in respect for the disenfranchised, directly affected landowners that weren't able to speak.
That's Christina, T U R E C H E K. I come from New York State. I'm not all that close to the Constitution. I know people who are long to the effect, they are setting to hear what's been happening down in Pennsylvania, in person here on the reading block. Trouble's come here. We have a beautiful 65 acres, and every time I hear something about what has happened, and I'm reading, and we all, I never told my teachers, the reading about wetlands, slopes, the interior parks, the migratory birds, the streams, the ponds, the seeds, and all the creatures. We have them too, probably different, but maybe a lot the same. We're afraid of the fracking, and that's one reason we're afraid of the Constitution coming true. But just to imagine what these people have been through is just, is unimaginable. I was gonna talk about homework. It seems the Constitution has a lot of homework to do. And it was handy to see in the dust, in bold you have the, there were 38 items that they had to accomplish, it seemed like most of them had been done and completed before the end of this period here. And I don't know how much they weren't done, but for instance, people have mentioned this, the upland forest plan, that's one of the plans that has to be completed, the upland forest mitigation plan. Again, mitigation, I don't...
Again, mitigation, I don't, I don't believe in that word. I think it's a picture. And then prior to construction, the final company results have been based, the plant surveys have been done. Blasting, the upstream blasting, a wetting water running, crossing, that plan has been done. And just for instance, all the outstanding biological surveys have to be completed, including the most good surveys. I mean, I don't know how much that were to be done. This isn't raft. But to call it a statement, it seems a little bit over the top, because there's so much left to be done. As I said, in bold, there were thirty-eight items in the first part. And then you have the FERC staff recommended mitigation section. And notice that, that contains some of those other, followed by mitigation. I notice, I mean, there are about four hundred entries, if you, if you try to find the word. Four hundred and eight entries. That's a lot of mitigation to handle. One of the things, I did have a question about. I noticed that they are trying to take here, not cut trees. I imagine that needs clear cut, even though when you're doing whole swab. During the winter time, I'm kind of birds. I wonder if it comes down, because if you cut, twenty seconds. If you kind of pull a lot down, what happens in that whole area when birds come back? They're territorial. Where do they go? The last thing I want to say is the sacrifice, this through compulsory integration that may happen in New York, through eminent, the force pulling, whatever. If any of that goes out of this country, I think that's treason.
I've been listening to everybody, and especially the people who are local. Some of the people I know, some I don't. My name is Vera Sroginis. V E R A S C R O G G I N S. I'm from Silver Lake Township. I just have to say that it was very painful to hear what we had to go through because of this infrastructure, because of the drilling, the past five or six years. And that when we have another pipeline coming in, that means for us more drilling. If they have a thirty-inch pipeline going in, they need more gas. So where are they going to get it from? Not from New Yorkers at this point. You're not being fracked or drilled like we are. They'll be coming out here and drilling ever more. They've only done twenty-five percent approximately of our county. So that means we have another seventy-five percent that they want to drill. We have eight hundred wells so far. And the main company, we have six companies in this county. The main one is Cabot, that has the biggest amount of these properties. And that's the company that is contracted to use the Constitution and fill it up with gas. And that company has five hundred and forty DEP violations so far in five years, in our county alone. You know what that sounds like? And millions in fines. So you met some of our residents who have damaged and contaminated water. We have six sections, areas in our county where there's families with contaminated water since drilling within their, near their homes and fracking. Those are the ones that we know of so far that have come forward. And Cabot is allowed to continue to operate. Would you, union people who are here, you have five hundred and forty violations in your specific union possibly, would they let you continue working as they allow this company to continue to operate? This company should have its permit pulled, so therefore it cannot ever put another ounce of gas in any kind of a pipeline, whether it's the Constitution, the Blue Stone, or any pipeline. Is it a disgrace what our country is doing to us? Is it a disgrace what they're doing to Americans that they would allow such a thing? I want to show you one of our lovely t-shirts that we have. We were told by one of the designers of fracking, Mr. Terry Engelder, he's a professor of Penn State. He called us a necessary sacrifice. Would you like to be called a necessary sacrifice? He thought that was okay. He doesn't live in our county. He doesn't have any, any kind of gas drilling near his home. He doesn't have rigs near his home. He doesn't have pipelines. And especially a thirty-inch pipeline with high-pressure gas up to fifteen hundred pounds per square inch next to his home. And he has the nerve to call us a necessary sacrifice. He came to our county and gave them a tour. I give tours to people. I gave him a tour and I showed him what we have to live with. This is what we have to live with, Terry. Is this okay for you? And you continue to be a professor at Penn State, a disgrace. You should be also just taken out of your position.
Evening, Craig Stevens, C R A I G, S D E V E N S, sixth generation landowner, Silver Lake Township, Pennsylvania. Fifth generation New Yorker. Yeah, my dad makes me carry it all the time. He's been dead for seven years. But it's called the rulebook, guys. That's the Constitution. Let me read it for you again. "Nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." That's Amendment Five. If you haven't read that before. You guys are all being lied to. This is public. You can't call this public use. It's a private property you're stealing to go through a private corporation's pipeline, the gas, to go to another private corporation at some port city to ship the gas to a foreign country. You try this, I'm going to sue you, and everybody else is going to sue the federal government and our state. Governor Drilbo won't stand up for us, but I'll tell you, we will, probably Governor Cuomo will tell you guys to get lost. Because state's rights over trumps federal, especially when you're stealing private property. Now, when my, when my pipeline got stolen, because guys, I'm all in. I got a gas lease. They put a pipeline across my property. It's owned by Williams now, it was laser. When they blew out my creek in my backyard eight times over two and a half months after telling us they were experts.
Yeah, right.
That's your experts putting stuff in. I've got the documents here, fish and bow found, guilty, fined thousands of dollars, five criminal complaints. They did an environmental study too. They didn't fall on any benefit. Ruined everything on the property. Then, when one of the mud trucks, when they were sucking up the blowout, oh, by the way, DEP doesn't call them blowout, folks. That's an end of return to service. I told them, somebody better clean it up or I'm having involuntary muscle reaction. There's my neighbor, John Jones. You might have known him. He was crushed to death when one of the mud trucks cleaning up that mess flipped over on him. Luckily, he didn't kill his seventeen-year-old daughter sitting in the passenger seat of his car. She got to watch her dad die over the next five minutes. Don't tell me that you guys know what they're doing. The driver, by the way, had no CDL and three failed brakes on the truck. You guys are being duped. Here's the tanker, they're building. Guess who's building them? China, biggest ships in the world right now. Going to take every bit of this, liquefy it, send it out of here. It's not for us. If you think it is, why in the hell were our propane prices like three times higher in the last three months? You know why? The, the pipeline that used to bring it up to us from the south is reverse flow, and they're stealing from us. We are a third-world extraction colony. That's what we are. All my timber's worthless. When they cut down hundreds of thousands of acres of trees, you can't give it away. My forester can't even make a living. He's got to work for hourly wage for these idiots and cut trees down for them. They're ripping you off too. If you have a lease, look at it. If you haven't read the paper in the last year, they're stealing your own mineral rights by taking away your twelve and a half percent royalty. Most people get three or four. This is who we're going to let come in here? Come on, guys. The Constitution, guys, go ask them. Oh, we don't know where the gas is going after Albany. Go to their website. One of the key points is LNG exports. What, anybody in here smart enough to know, when we have low-priced gas right now, when we start competing for Russia, China, India, and Norway for it, we're going to be paying two or three times as much, just like we offer propane now. Steal your property, rip everybody off, contaminate our property. And if you don't believe these people, come over and try to drink their water. I guarantee it will be an experience you'll never forget, if you survive it.
Twenty seconds, please.
Once again, I'm going to finish up by naming, I'm renaming FERC for the fourth time this week. FERC, foul the environment and rip off the citizens. Thank you very much.
Hi there. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. I'm really going to have trouble summarizing all this in four minutes. I'd have trouble in forty minutes. There's so much defective here. Before I address the FERC guys, I want to talk to landowners here. If there's any landowner here who has signed an agreement with Constitution Pipeline and you regret that, the best thing that you can do, that we all can do to kill this project, is for you to send a letter of rescindence or recension to the applicant. And there is an example of such a letter at StopThePipeline.org. If come, if you need assistance in finding that, that letter, come find me afterwards, and I will be happy to assist you. Now then, my friend Kevin Healy, I don't know if he's still here or not. He was talking, my friend Wendy Lindley were talking about forests. I did a simple numerical analysis of how many, how, how many trees are going to be destroyed by this pipeline forever? And it's pretty easy. You just, you start with a hundred feet right away, and you run, you multiply it by a hundred and twenty-one miles. Turns out that it's one thousand four hundred and sixty-six acres. That's equal to, you know, this is the high school. We got a football field here. You all know how big a football field is. One thousand one hundred football fields. Four hundred acres of the one thousand four hundred and sixty-six acres are farmland. Four hundred acres of farmland are going to be permanently lost. Actually, half of that supposedly is going to be reclaimed, but you're not going to be able to farm on top of a pipeline right away. Three hundred football fields of farmland lost forever. Four hundred and thirty thousand trees. And they say half that will be reclaimed. Well, you know what? You cut down a tree and you grow a new one. It's not the same. It isn't the same. You know, it's just, it's such a smorgasbord. We got the character of the applicant we can look at. Cabot Williams, a history of noncompliance with regulations, environmental catastrophes, you know, fatalities, accidents with fatalities. They're just, they're like the Three Stooges. I made a little video of them. And it's like, you know, the Three Stooges banging each other with pipes going woo, woo, woo. That's what these guys are. They're a bunch of goofballs. They do not deserve a certificate of public convenience. And that, you must consider the character of the applicant. FERC must, before you decide whether they are, if they are qualified to follow the regulations. There's no indication that they are, that they have any intention of following any regulations. There's that amount of data to suggest that they won't. They have a history of secrecy. They blow up these compressor stations. We've had, out of four recent incidents in the last two years of compressor stations exploding, we've had one public hearing and one explanation, and they've been silent on the other three. And we've been asking for that. There's no, you know, exports, we've been talking about that. My friend up here, Matt Walker, did an excellent job talking about the air impacts of the compressor stations that are not there. They're not in the DEIS. They're called, I'm trying to think of the term. They're called related, but,
Twenty seven.
Related but non-jurisdictional facilities. What the heck does that mean? Related but non-jurisdictional? FERC has used an improper analysis of whether they are jurisdictional facilities. You are bound by the NIBA, the National Environment Policy Act, to include all environmental impacts. You have failed to do that. This thing is a joke.
What were your comments?
You must take this back, and we are going to do any means necessary to live a balance. I'm a non-environmental person. I can't guarantee that we all are. But we're going to do any means necessary to stop this project. Thank you.
We have this meeting like this. Madi Marsh, M A R S H. Cabot Williams comes to his own rural area and announces they are fully subscribed and will build a pipeline through our properties for a hundred and twenty-four miles. Maybe Cabot Williams should check with residents first to find out what the consensus is among the landowners. Sadly missing from the environmental impact statement is what this process does to people who are slated to have a pipeline through their property. People must be taken into consideration. Who would choose to move to a home with a pipeline running through it? A thirty-inch high-pressure pipeline with a burn zone of four thousand four hundred and fifty feet? A pipeline that has no odorant? A pipeline that will devalue property, contaminate wealth, and end whatever dreams people have for their property? This onslaught is with us every day, stress and worry about what will happen to our health, home values, forests, our forests, our wildlife, our bird sanctuaries, our walking and hiking trails, our night skies, our peace and quiet, our gardens, crops, flowers, our futures. My husband and I worked extremely hard for a very long time to save, to buy our farm. We are in the Cars Creek watershed and have three wetlands and two ponds on our property. We value and are good stewards of our forests and lands. We follow the best management practices. We are not alone. Seventy percent of landowners along this proposed route have not signed easements, nor do we intend to. Cabot Williams will have to steal our land. The profit is not ours. The damage left behind is ours. Victoria Switzer, V I C T O R I A, S W I T C E R. I live in Dimick, and I could read you a book tonight about my front row experience with gas industry. But I can't write that book, and that's all I'm saying about that. But the question no one's asked you, where did you come up with the name Constitution Pipeline? Because nothing I'm hearing tonight represents a constitution in any way, shape, or form. Who signs the constitution? Who, who endorses the industry at the expense of the citizens that you are to serve? We pay the salaries of EPA, DEP, FERC, yet you serve the industry. The Constitution Pipeline, I just had to ask that question. None of your, none of these signatures that I mentioned actually serve the welfare, health, or safety of the citizens. It's all to promote and support the industry. You've already made your deals. We might as well just speak. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United Oil and Gas Industry.
Yes, first I'd like to address the audience and I'll address the board. I'd like to disclose that I and three members of my family are proud union members. And I absolutely hate to see this division of pro and anti-pipeline people. If there was a major catastrophe, we would all be working. If there was a major catastrophe, we would all be working side by side, not giving a damn about our position on this pipeline. And there is no one I would want working next to me more than everyone in this room. But we have to realize that oil and gas companies love pitting us against each other instead of us uniting and looking at their destructive, environmental polluting policies. Why do you think unions came into being? Because of the corporations exploiting us. All of you could have just as good jobs with renewable energy companies if, if oil and gas companies were not stopping the advancement of renewable energy development. Now I'd like to address the board. I'd like to say that we all know that FERC is nothing more than a front for corporations. We all know that. Now I'd like to talk about the contents of the DEIS. A publication that size should have been as clear, concise, and exact as possible, covering all and any questions that could possibly be asked about this project. Instead, I and many others found the wording of that publication to be elusive, unspecific, deceptive, unclear, obscure, vague, inexplicit, imprecise, bewildering, generalized, ill-defined, indeterminate, problematic, puzzling, perplexing, evasive, muddled, and abstract. I hope that I have made myself clear. I have no doubt that every single page of the DEIS was written in conjunction with Cabot lawyers, with FERC putting their name and emblem on the front cover. The DEIS is a blatant insult to everyone who received it.
Thank you.
Bevila Lachlan. She's coming in.
Good evening again, Bevila Lachlan, B-E-V-I-L-A-C-Q-U-A. A gentleman last night in Afton referred to people opposed to the pipelines as tree huggers. I differ the resent evermore. I live a modern life full of modern anomalies. That's the right word. I choose to live here because of the rural character. And if I wanted to live in a polluted, filled area, I would never have left Downstate. Constitution does not have the right to come into my neighborhood, steal my land, pollute my air and water for their and corporate profits. Compressor stations, which are part of the pipeline significantly impact air quality. I'd also like to express my disappointment with FERC's handling of the rowdiness and disrespect that its audience, particularly union members, have displayed. And I'd like to lodge a formal complaint against Charles Brown. I was having a private discussion yesterday when you called a break and somebody interfered with my conversation and Charles Brown came in and insulted my husband and he had no business getting involved in my conversation and I want a formal complaint lodged against him. The majority of the comments in the last three nights, and we've been to every single one, I put miles, miles of mileage on my car. The pipeline's not even going on my property, but I care. I care my friends, I care about, it's gonna affect, I'm part of the burn zone. I care about the air that I breathe when I come out of my house, and my kids, and my animals. I have a farm. I don't wanna smell their toxic air. The majority of the comments were documented by out-of-area union members bribed by various entities. And I feel that as much as they were entitled to their time, most of the time was spent listening to them. When the landowners were talking, we were being heckled and booed. But when their union members were up there, everybody was quiet and I was very disrespectful. And I think that you as a FERC panel should have done something about that. I don't think it should have come to that. Thank you very much.
I'm Tom Skoliver, CO, LLIDR. I'm an adjacent landowner, four thousand feet from the proposed pipeline route, and I stand to lose land value due to it. These four FERC landowner comment sessions have permitted me a glimpse into the corporate state we mask around as a democracy of, for, and by the people. It started with the DEIS floating out in front of us, revolved for all of our review and comment on it, in, it is, in and of itself, and insulting our intelligents. It was intentionally confusing and incomplete in its form. Next, these sessions themselves, which had descended into near physical confrontation, hopefully not their original intent, were intentionally meant as a forum for people with land affected by the proposed pipeline route, or who stood to land and lose that land and their nest egg, or had their lifestyle changed forever for corporate profit and shareholder dividends, and voiced their concerns and opinions about the perceived shortcomings of this DEIS. Next is the direction the sessions have taken. I watched as they devolved into conflict between concerned citizens, landowners against each other, not against the actual corporation who wrote these rules and regulations we are supposed to be commenting on. People who may have worked all their lives, possibly even at union jobs, posed unintentionally or intentionally against other citizen landowners, bust in and compensated to attend these sessions by business agents or employers to express their need and desire to work in or on a hole in the ground for a fossil fuel corporation for approximately eight months on potentially stolen land. This is, this is a completely unfair assembly of citizens led to believe we are on opposing sides, evidenced by rudeness and disrespect toward one another. We all need to stop and realize that we are not in disagreement with each other but the quote "person" unquote not in the room trying to control our lives, Williams and Constitution corporations. Let us find that common ground and live together. FERC, your job is to make this right for all of us. This has been unfairly staged and imposed conflict by the very corporation we should all, at the very least questioned, and at the very most totally opposed. Not between each other, or has this all been planned? Think about it, decide for yourself. Good luck for your jobs, difficult one. We are all restless. Good night and thank you.
Stan Wojcowski, S-T-A-M-W-O-J-T-K-O-D-S-K-I. I, I didn't really come here to speak, I didn't really wanna say anything. I've been working on the pipeline since '08. I worked on the Millennium Line, I'm in the union. You know, I'm sorry some of y'all have hard feelings and everything and you talk about invasive species and stuff, man, Florida's got a real bad problem with snakes. Think you might need to go that way. I don't know everything, I care a lot about the land. I do restoration, I've been doing it since '08. I go back, I check, I make sure that the land's put back the way it was. I put, make sure all the ECDs are in, all your silt fence and everything. And I'm sorry some of y'all have some hard feelings here, but I got a young daughter, I got a wife. I mean, without the pipeline, I wouldn't have anything. People around this area have nothing. You're lucky to make twenty thousand dollars. My parents alone will make twelve thousand dollars a year. Can y'all live off that?
Yeah, we're living on it.
It's, it's hard. And with this pipeline coming into this area, look at all the boom coming through. People are thriving. Look at your, your stone hardware alone. I've been here for ten years now and just everything in this area has just grown and grown. Look at Texas, they've been doing it, you know what I mean? Pipeline's been here, the guy sits since 1930s. I know myself, just last year, we were on the lineups from the 50s. And we take all precautions and we really care about our land, we really do. And you know what? A lot of the problems, and I'm not trying to talk bad about any company, but as far as union work goes, when you say union, that means professional work. And when y'all hire these other pipeline companies that are not union, they're hiring people right off the street that don't take training classes, that don't really know anything. And if y'all put this constitution on and y'all put it for the union, it'll be done, and it'll be done properly and on time. And that's all I gotta say.
Barbara Lovell, B-A-R-B-A-R-A-L-O-V-F-L-E-R. I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight, but as I thought about this whole thing last night and the document that I tried to pick things out of, my concern now that I'm in Pennsylvania is a concern I had early on and I questioned what would be the setback in a later timeframe now that the Constitution, thinking that this horrible thing would exist and fracking would begin, what would the setbacks be? And now I'm thinking in terms of Pennsylvania with, this is, it already exists and they're gonna run a pipeline through here. There's nothing in that document that addresses how far away they would have to be from a frac site that can by their own admission blow up. What would that do to the pipeline with an eight-hundred-foot crater in the ground? Is there an eight-hundred-foot setback? I don't think so. Is there a thousand-foot setback? I, I'm just very concerned for the people who live within any distance of the new pipeline going through all these frac sites. And as Vera said, eight-hundred wells times six million gallons of water a day? And this is gonna continue? This is our country's plan for the northeast of the United States? Like, this is bizarre. Where is all this water coming from? Does the city of New York need no more water? None of our little cities along here need water. Only I do, we're there the other day. We're in a big valley. What happens to our water when it's gone? We won't get it back, it will be poisoned. And this pipeline, as I said before, is the order for fracking. Because when Pennsylvania is suck dry, we will be next. Thank you.
Epifanio Bevilaqua, E-P-I-F-A-N-I-O, Bevilaqua, B-E-V-I-L-A-C-Q-U-A. I am also a union, Local 79, Downstate. I drive one-hundred-and-eighty miles every weekend each way. Came up here, work on the farm. My wife told you I have cows, I have horses, I have sheep, okay? I have one-hundred-and-fifty acres up here. Corporation is pitting us union guys against each other. We should be in solidarity. I talked to your business agents a while back, Seventeen and all of them, they don't wanna listen, they don't wanna hear. Constitution already built the Constitution compressor station right here at Franklin and Rebecca wrote it right up a block, I did there last year. Fifty workers there, no union guys, no guys from Pennsylvania. And your delegates will get the YouTube, thanks to Vera Shragans. Cabot Oil put an injunction on Vera Shragans. They should give her a medal. She's a hero for all of us in this room, to make us aware of what they're doing. They're exploiting us union guys against each other. My father, my uncles, they're all in Local 6A, 18A, 20A, okay? You probably know people from all over, just like I do, right? We shouldn't be fighting, we should be understanding each other. Like the lady said, where are we gonna get the water? You don't have no water, you don't have no plants, you can't grow no food. Like I said last night, but some of yous had left already. If we're gonna start fighting, we're gonna eat each other up with cannibals. Cannibals, right? We can't even get along here. These guys are corporations. And we as unions in solidarity, we've been fighting corporations. I was at the 40,000 march. The cops wanted to run me over with horses. They ran over John Lang with the horse that they were gonna run me over with, cuz I was leading the crowd. Louis Montalvo knows me, I spoke to him. I sent him to YouTube with the fifty workers on site, nobody was union. Not even anybody from Pennsylvania. There was one woman that was five hours away here in Pennsylvania. So, sign the contract, if it goes through, make sure you're good stewards like I was. I had high-profile jobs in there, and I worked on the high-rise. I worked at Empire State Building, I worked at the Trade Center. I saw the second plane going to the Trade Center the day it happened, from 745th, 750th Street, where Morgenthau owned the building and they sold to Lehman Brothers, which they went belly up. And they're using our pension money to fuel this. When we re, like you guys are younger than me, you're gonna retire, where's your pension money gonna be? They're gonna wipe it out. That's what they're using, to drill and drill and drill. Ray Campbell, we used to be Drill Baby Drill. Now he's listed the harm, the list is up to 1,200, plus the gag orders so they can shut you up and you can't speak. And the doctors even have gag orders, they can't even tell you what's wrong with you. Then we wonder where cancer's coming from. Why don't they do the health impact study first? Before they started drilling in Pennsylvania? Ray Campbell and Manningham, she had a granddaughter, she can't even breathe upstairs. Afraid of the houses, this the way you want people to live in your communities? Once they start drilling, plus we're all downwind, all the water from up here is gonna go down to five boroughs. All my sisters and brothers from Local 79 live mostly in the five boroughs.
Twenty seconds, please.
Then they're gonna take it to Long Island, the back flood fluid, and they're gonna bring it to the treatment plants in Long Island. And food and water, watching, everybody knows this. So wake up and let's smell the coffee, everybody. This is a disgrace to the human race and this is genocide.
Well, Mr. Bevilaqua was the last speaker to sign up tonight. So that's a full part of tonight's meeting, we'll close. I wanna, I appreciate everyone who came out here tonight, everyone who spoke, everyone who shared tonight, presented themselves in a professional, courteous manner, and I really do appreciate that. So I wanna mention quickly, if you want additional information about this product, use our website, ferc.gov, using the e-Linero link, and sharing the project document numbers, which are CP13-499 and CP13-502, you can find everything that is available about these two projects. So we have the Energy Recovery Project Division, U.S. Department of Commerce, and thank you for all coming here tonight. And let the record show that the four comment meetings for the Constitution Pipeline and FERC projects will begin at nine, 17:00 P.M.
StopThePipeline.org.
Yes, deny the pipeline. Save our lives, save our health. Deny the pipeline. Deny the pipeline.
So just if we drove in. I just, my inner feeling is that maybe she was so sure that it's going to go through and that we have to be brave. You know, and I wish, I always wish to be the person you wish it to be. You know what I really wish?
Thanks for speaking.
Thank you. What I really wished I'd say, just to the union workers, is that, what is it? Is it, well, the truth, the truth is that when those guidelines are issued, you know, for our team.
And I want to know why.
Yeah, I just, like, the multiple calling. There were the pipelines there. There's no reason, there's just no good reason to think that they're not. No, I mean, they're taking like a gazillion pictures. No, it's not, there's no requirement.
There's no requirement.
Taking these gazillion pictures of things like bad wells and people welling. And they're not union workers. They're guys imported from Texas. They're consistently like Hispanic guys.
I guess because they're from Michigan.
Yeah. But they're, but they're not native. On the job train.
And even just judging from the world, you know, they're not union.
I'd like to request that no videos be put anywhere else.
I took some awesome pictures. But you did.
Should have braided. Almost no braiding.
Well, I know.
I gotta, I gotta braid. Otherwise I got a weird beard.
Oh, beard. Thanks for coming out.
Right in seven minutes. I said it to my delegate, my organizer, that everybody knew here. Louis Montalvo from Washington. Now he's going to executive board.
Oh, wow, thanks Barbara.
Yeah, that'd be the next, so if they issue the,
Get a copy of their video.
Oh, I don't know about the video. This, this guy's just a.
This one is the best of the four meetings. I'm going to say right now. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Congratulations. He's the best speaker this evening. I was the director. Best speaker, the most passionate feeling here. We're all sitting here with the same thoughts. We have to move forward. And we didn't have any hatery. Nobody interrupted us. It was great. Thank you.